It might have already got addressed, I'm not sure. But it was just brought up to the end of school about what plans is going to be made. Y'all just curious if y'all had moved down.
Okay, alright. I'll let Michael go first. Here's two of y'all. You signed up and then I'm not sure if I even signed up. Were you familiar with the, how much time?
How much do I get, three minutes?
Ah, okay.
Thank you, School Board and Mr. Superintendent. I want to speak today a little bit about some public information that has come out. And everything I have here is from the TDA website. I come as a citizen, taxpayer, and as a governmental financial professional. The financial and tax rate system of Texas is where you refer to us first. If schools want to watch school districts this year, 81.8% received an A. 11.55% received a B. 6.16% received a C. This is a total of 63 school districts out of 1,022. 0.49% received a F. This is the next grade after C. Five out of 1,022 received this score. Specifically on Iowa ISD. In 2014, 2015, our school district received an A. We had a fund balance per TDA website of $1,608,471. In 2015-16, our school district received a B. We had a fund balance of $1,411,635. The most recent score we received, which is on the 2016-17 school data, was a C. Our fund balance dropped to $655,849. I want to read two sections out of that report that are concerning to me and I'm sure all the citizens. In that score, we received zero in two areas. One question was, what, or was the number of day, or number of days of cash on hand and current investments in the general fund for the school district sufficient to cover operating expenditures, excluding facilities, acquisition, and construction costs? We received a zero. The next zero we received was, did the school district's general fund revenues equal or exceed expenditures, excluding facilities, acquisition, and construction costs? If not, was the school district's number of days of cash on hand greater or equal to 60 days? We received a zero out of 10 points. The question then comes in, and I think is, a lot of us want to know is, what is our fund balance as of 2017-18? Because that's a big question and concern for all of us, because that will be our next grade going into the year after. If it goes down, we receive a F. We will be one of the smaller percentages of the state. I want to reiterate the responsibilities of a school board and stat and administration is the stewardship of the citizens' funds and the sustainability of the standards of the school. Iowa ISD is one of the main reasons people come to our area. That's the reason why our property values are the way they are. People are trying to move here, they can't find stuff. So, any change in our school districts, I'm going to say viability or credibility for all of us, taxpayers, property owners, everything. Another area I want to speak about real quick, financial transparency. This comes as experience, if you don't know, I'm the treasurer for the city of College Station, Texas. We have to have financial information posted on our websites. Budget, financials, budget amendments, any type of budgetary control. I do want to point you back to the Texas Education Code, Section 44.0041 on the budget. Please investigate that, requirements for budget transparency. I just want to say, as an concerned citizen, taxpayer, many of us in the community seen in that most recent report, were just concerned. We want to make sure that we write our school district, we don't want nothing more than to have a viable ownership. Thank you.
Jim, your next note. It sounded like you were going to pose a question. No, we don't, I'm not responding back to y'all, you're just talking. So, I mean, you can pose it that way, we have what information you requested and we'll get back to you on site. Oh, okay. But go ahead.
Oh, okay. The only thing that, I was at the, I guess, the meeting in May, at the end of May, and we had talked about an issue with security, and just like today with the issue that City College Station going on. Y'all, y'all had said that y'all were going to look at it. I know Mr. Jones had, I think, met with the firm to see what, way, you know, some bids and stuff with that. So, I was kind of trying to see if we had moved in any area. I know that y'all had said y'all were going to get some feedback from the community and so forth, so that, I was just, you know, just seeing where that was going.
I would encourage you, Mr. Mark. Now, we have had conversations. Okay. Alright, thank you, Jim. Alright, number four, consideration of 2018-2019 proposed budget.
You guys have in closing your packet, a proposed budget for 2018-19 school year. You can see that has a, under our 199 general fund, a total revenue projected, revenue of $4,799,991. And total expenditures under 199 general funds, $4,736,659. Could be in excess of $63,000 and some change. You also see 240, lunchroom account is working there, and totals to the bottom left. So, covering lunchroom, and all the totals, you'd see it would be in excess of $44,299 projected.
One question, the budget workshop, we had talked about an extra employee in the cafeteria. Is that, is it in?
Yes, sir. That is in this budget, and we have one hiring recommendation for this evening that is also within this budget. So, I recommend that the board trustees approve the 2018 budget.
I have a question about the, about the, I feel like, you know, I know that you got me some information, but I just feel like because of our situation, that the revenue projection is too high for what we're actually going to receive, based on the information that I got from appraisal district office. Have any of you seen this? You know, whatever. I think it's about, it's about $200,000 to $300,000. That less of what we're actually going to get according to the county appraisal. And so, I'm just thinking that we should be more conservative, since we are in a financial crisis, financial situation, and that we should look at what the county says we're going to get.
Sure. And when we talked today on the phone, I shared with you, the difference comes from that where the sheet that you just passed out does not include the frozen taxes. And so, that's why I have a different projected revenue. And as I shared in the budget workshop, I've talked to several different school finance people. I followed up with one Thursday on the phone, he does private consulting for school districts, and he gave me a free hour over the phone. And after looking at our template, he said our numbers will be there.
Well, I think, I think we're just saying, well, it would be good if we got it, but what if we don't? And that if we were the conservative side, then if we had any, if we got more than we thought, then that might be something that we could put back in front of that.
Unless we cut extensions.
Well, and I think that we can cut more if necessary.
I thought that was the purpose of the budget workshop.
Well, I asked, we discussed some things, and he was also going to look up, and we didn't actually have another meeting to go through those things. $200,000 to $300,000 is a lot of money.
I think the numbers are right. And I do think it's, this is, these are the 18 days. 355 is the frozen value, let's start at the top. This is our total taxable value. 337, they take out 41 million, right? For those that are subject to any kind of exemption. So, they take that out, and you're left with this 296. 1.04 times 296 is that 383,470?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Now, that 41 million doesn't go untaxed, it just is a set tax amount of 355, 237 down here at the bottom. So, you'd have to add the 383,470 to the 355 to come up with the 3,438,707, which is actually more than what he has budgeted in there.
Right.
And I, I think these numbers are right.
So, what, so what about the county's numbers?
It includes everything, except for the 355 to 470.
It includes, it doesn't include the prices.
Does not include this.
So, you're, so...
We still get this amount, because I call it Shannon Sanders and verified my fill. We get this. Just if you go back to 2017, go through the same calculation, comes up we should receive 3,011,760. Today, we've received 29, it was dang near 3. So, we hit the within 10 or 20,000 of that. So, I think the numbers are right on the revenue side.
As Mr. Good just pointed out, the number we're using is conservative compared to what we're supposed to be receiving. I also did that with our state funding as well. And the template shows that our state funding would be a little more than what we've budgeted here as well. So, both numbers are conservative.
And in past years, we've included TMPA money, is that what you've been doing?
Very little. 55,000, yes. I believe the notification we got from TMPA was...
Seventy-two.
Seventy-two. So, again, another conservative estimation for revenue.
Are there other cuts you want to discuss? I mean, we can...
About what?
The cuts. Hey, you said we could be more conservative.
Well, on the budget, I think that we should, that we should get back together again. I think that we could be, but I'm just, I'm really nervous about this. I think that even the county goes along with what they say they're going to get by this. And so, I'm just, I'm really nervous that we might not get that much money.
What's the deadline for passing this? This is just proposed budget, so we can post it in the paper.
With tax rate?
Yes. The tax rates, just going to be a dollar four?
Dollar four, and INS has said also, to make our number thing. So, that has to be posted, that's what I'm going to say.
But the difference in the works that Carolyn handed out, and what's budgeted is basically the frozen funds.
The frozen funds. That sheet doesn't include.
Okay, so you're wanting to get back together, another budget workshop?
Yeah.
Do we have time?
Our budget has to be passed, of course, at the end of one.
So, this, so we have to pass a proposed budget for the paper?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Is everybody okay with passing it as proposed, and then we'll call another workshop?
Is there any other one that I can ask?
Yeah. I don't know that, I don't know how much leaner we can get on the expense side. I mean, we went, went through the other management issues.
Well, as I look, payroll has increased about $400,000 in three years. That's an expense that's not going to go away. And I don't know, it's going to be very difficult to have a balance budget every year for cost of that amount of money, that increase in payroll.
Right, but it's broadening.
So, but, yeah.
But that's the...
But I think that, yeah.
That payroll number is the number that is used in the budget, though.
Right, right, right. It is. But I don't see that the other functions have been cut that much, like supplies, just I don't know, there's other things to me that have not been cut that much when I got that. Did you all look at that information, the detailed function? Did you look at that, compared to the year before, or compared to this year? It didn't look like there were a lot of cuts anywhere.
In our budget workshop, we agreed on all the cuts that I was making. I made even more since the budget workshop.
And I didn't have that information at that time.
Okay, why don't we move forward with that now? We'll pass the proposed, and the tax rates are set. I mean, we don't really have a choice there. We'll call another budget workshop, and so down.
So, it's likely, because I'm kind of new at this, so if you pass a proposed, what does that mean? That you can still change it?
We have, yes, it's, we can still change. We really don't, I think we have to do that because of the posting of the paper. And the deadline for our weekly circulation this week, so tonight we have to do this.
Right.
But then we can come back, all that leaves us is if we can find more cuts.
And just because we have a past budget, doesn't mean we can't make expense cuts along the way.
That is true. So, yeah. Which I think that what Mr. Mark Dale was trying to do with staff is encourage everybody to find where they can stay. But we can do that, if you feel better about looking at it again.
Please accept the proposed budget as presented.
Okay. Motion to accept the proposed budget as presented. Second by Scott, those in favor, raise your hand. Motion period six of item number five, consideration of proposed tax rate for 2018-2019.
You guys have in your packet there the proposed tax rate. INS tax rate for 2018, or the 2018-19 bond payment is $588,850. Last year, our INS rate was .22555. The tax rate of .19408 will collect the additional funds needed, which is the $588,000 we see to pay our bond payment for 2018. This is down .0315 from last year. Our M&amp;O rate, Robes County has certified our 2018 freeze adjustable tax value at $296,487,574. The 2017 certified freeze adjusted taxable value was $2,602,614,230,000. This is an increase of $34,64,574. This past year, our M&amp;O rate was a dollar four. So, the proposed tax rate, 2017 tax rate was a dollar twenty-six. I recommend, I would recommend an INS rate of .19408. I recommend an M&amp;O rate of a dollar four, but that's all about that. The total rate would be a dollar, $1.23. This is a decrease, again, of .0315 from last year. So, I recommend the board trustees approve the proposed INS tax rate of .19408 cents, and a proposed M&amp;O tax rate of a dollar four for 2018. Or a total tax rate of $1.23.
Before we get a motion, does anybody recall, does that have to be in separate motions?
We can have that.
Okay. Alright.
How many of you have a motion?
You have a motion to approve the tax rate as presented, total tax rate of 1.26555. Does it open for discussion? Second. Those in favor, raise your hand. Motion period six of item number six, consideration of tax assessor collector certification accepting excess debt collection in 2018 anticipated collection rate.
Each year, the tax assessor collector is required by law to certify excess debt collection and the next year's anticipated collection rate. The anticipated collection rate is always set at 100%. A copy of the certification is enclosed in your packet. I recommend the board trustees approve the tax assessor collector certification of 2017 excess debt collections and 2018 anticipated collection rate.
So, we have a motion. Second, any discussion? Those in favor, raise your hand. Motion period four, item number seven, consideration of approval of the local investment policy.
In closing, your packet, you'll find a TASB policy, CVA Local. The investment management policy for the district funds shall be in accordance with the standard of care, investment training, and other requirements set forth in the government code in chapter 2256. The superintendent or other person designated by board resolution shall serve as the investment officer of the district. The policy, this policy must be approved and/or approved. I recommend the board trustees to approve the local investment policy, CVA Local.
I have a question about page, I believe it's three, three or four. Internal controls. This is number three, this still goes safekeeping and clear delegation of authority. Is this for investment only, or is this also that funds can be withdrawn? Because I would like something added to that, that, that either the, before funds can be withdrawn, that, that we, that at least the board president knows, or the board knows, or there's other people that, you know, can flick into that before it's drawn, that they can't just go in and draw the money out.
Sure. I believe this states this for withdrawal also. I don't have any problem if you guys want to add something in as local policy. So, I do not want to be notified every time. That's up to you guys.
The current control, what's the amount for two signatures? The file?
I think it's five.
I think it's five. And the only, you know, you fight a little bit more on the count, but now, maybe?
I would not.
You're, we have to present what this is.
I think I am, I am Joe, not Joe the jam. I may be right this time. I'll have to double check.
So, Ms. Mallon, just, are you wanting to add something right there?
Well, I'm just thinking that in the past, that we have voted that the superintendent and Jan are the ones that have the authority to do this, and I'm just saying, I feel like it needs to be, before funds are withdrawn, that either you're notified before they're withdrawn, or the board is aware that funds...
Certain dollars are held, or...
Well, I think any amount out of fund balance at this point.
Oh, out of fund balance, I got it.
Yes. And that's basically, well, investments are fund balance, right? Investments are part of fund balance. Yeah.
Okay. Well, they're not separated, they're, they're in a general fund.
We have, yeah.
It's what's unaccounted for, or left over.
Right.
I mean, the only ones that are in fund balance that aren't moving would be your time deposits. The tax pool is in and out all the time. But you move from the tax pool to Wells Fargo, and so that would be a movement, but all your revenue goes in. Do you want to postpone it, and maybe we can look into that more?
Okay.
Do we need, does this have to be passed right now?
No, sir.
Okay.
We can look into it, add it to... I'll check for somebody, Mr. Thompson, I'll check.
No, we're not, we're not managing that. I would take this to item number eight, personnel.
Ms. Juski, you're on.
I just have a recommendation for hiring another certified teacher. As you know, we've been keeping up to speed on one of our, one of our group's students that's going into fifth grade right now. They're our largest grade, I believe they're up to 51 as of now. Mrs. Hamilton, Kristy Hamilton, was a certified teacher last year who acted as an aide inside the classroom to help the fourth grade teachers pull small groups, guide instruction, and really help in a lot of areas that they needed help in. She was dedicated to those kids. She helped lesson plan with both Mrs. Rice and Mrs. Davis. So, I'm recommending Kristy Hamilton to be the fourth grade math and science teacher. And what that allows us to do, that allows us to have, Mrs. Rice, she had come to us and said that she would want to move up with fifth grade and act as a third teacher to do science and social studies. So, kind of taking a little bit of burden off of fifth grade, Mrs. Trenton having to do two star subjects now, she only needs to do one. Mrs. Rice was asking if she could do that. So, by us having a third teacher in fifth grade, I'd like to hire Ms. Hamilton to do the fourth grade math and science.
And just, you see, that's along with what you had recommended before, that we review it, it's ongoing, and that's, that's what you come to, you feel pretty good about that.
Yes, yes, it takes the class size down from 25, 26, down to 76. So, helps tackle that.
Do we have any other large classes that are close to them?
We have right now, as, right now, second grade, I guess, sort of sprouted up. As of today, I think we're at 49. But I met with Ms. Mallon and Ms. McCowen, and we had talked about some options for this year, should it get too big? They're going to evaluate if they have any needs, kind of like we saw last year, and I've got some options that we're, we're going to work out.
Ms. Juski, though, the numbers in second grade's kind of sprouted just over the summer.
Yeah, within a lot of...
Because those classes were not that big last year in first grade.
Yeah.
So, people move into the district.
Yeah, that's not transfer.
Are very many of those transfers in fifth grade, are in second grade?
Not really in fifth grade. The ones that have come that are in fifth grade, they've been here since kindergarten, so they're just kind of grandfathered in. But we didn't take any new transfers for second. We saw the numbers getting close to the waiver size, and we thought, well, let's just leave it open. We're glad we did, because they're, you know, they've really gotten a lot of kids in the last couple of weeks, so.
So, I mean, they have pretty little employment.
Well, I have questions here. I, you know, of all the people that want this, I want it, for the kids, I want it. I don't think we can afford it. I truly don't think we can afford it. I, I think that in reading, that they needed the smaller groups, especially in the lower gr, in the lower grades, and that's where it's capped, right? Twenty-two to fourth grade, and fifth grade's not capped.
Right.
Fifth grade no longer is learning how to read, they're learning skills about reading, but, you know, I just think, I don't think we can afford it to hire. That is the most expensive part of our budget, is payroll. And we keep, and we're adding where we should be cutting. We should be cutting. We've got to make up for all this. We should be cutting.
I think one of the things that was so different about the fifth grade group, why we're looking into that, was because, you know, by fifth grade, they should be really reading to learn. And there was, you know, several, about half, that were significantly under grade level in reading. So, you know, that, that really helps to keep them smaller, because some, quite a few of those kids are still learning to read at a third grade level, if we're at.
They have intervention, right? They have reading intervention, they have math intervention, they have intervention. We're providing intervention.
Yes, yes.
I almost said this to the board, when we were in the budget workshop, we, we did and discussed this exact thing we gave Mark Dale to go ahead. So, I don't think we have a choice here.
When we cut the personnel this year, this position, so we did away with it, and we're going to work on budgeting. We've done, completely done away with an administrative position, which is going to make it harder on several people. That's what you do, to make things work. So, I mean, that's still my recommendation.
I have a thought too on that, is this is something that we've been working with the last. We really need to focus a little on that, because of grade level, not that on the paper, because I know where we're sitting budget-wise. It's not military, and I agree with you on that. But I think this was a way that we could kind of work with aides, additional help, to get this class that was struggling. And we told her she needed help to come through, and I felt like we asked her right now, but she asked, and she was willing, so that's what she's asking for.
Mr. Mark Dale, this is in the budget as well, this position. So, which comes by balance?
Yes, sir.
Who hired Kristy Hamilton?
Motion is second to hire Kristy Hamilton as presented. Any open for conversation?
I'm going to vote against it, not, not the person, and I want it more than anybody, but I'm going to vote against a position being created.
Okay, any other discussion? Those in favor, raise your hand. Opposed? There's five, you want to turn them opposed?
I have one more thing. Just information for you guys, there is a required board training, Senate Bill 1566. And we have to have that training done before September 1st. Contacted Region 6, and we have, only certain people can provide this training, you have to be certified to provide this training. So, we need to be here on August 30th, that's when the Region 6 person can be here. If we can all be here as a team of eight on the 30th, and we also take care of a required team event training, again, that one's required, and this required right until December 31st. So, if we can all be here on August 30th for this training, we get to... So if we can all be here on August 30th for this training, we get two trainings in one session.
What is going on during that night, Scott?
It's the 30th, second night. We have a board meeting the 29th for our budget. And Thursday night is, I don't think there's any school activities, when I check the calendar, I'm just over nine. So my question for you guys was, do you want a morning, afternoon, or evening training? It'll be about two hours.
Second, February morning.
It's on August 30th?
That's on August 30th, yes, ma'am.
I haven't meant any, I can't, not that evening.
That evening?
Correct.
So you make the, so it's all day or?
It's a, I think.
So you can make them all.
So you can make them all evening? So that's, I'm just trying to hear your feedback, so if we call this gentleman tomorrow, it's going to be.
So you can make them morning?
I can. Is eight o'clock okay, over there in the morning? All right. That's on the need, I was scheduled for eight o'clock. And like I said, all of us being here, we'll get both trainings at one time.
And we're dealing with a little bit of a, in the short run, getting a budget workshop called back together for second meeting. Does anybody have major conflicts this morning, Monday and Thursday? We have to be this, we probably want to. Do you want to shoot everybody an email and tell us? Have you checked your calendar?
Yes, sir. As I, as you asked, I would just.
We have more motion. Please return. Second. No opposition.